...and watching online. Welcome to the annual meeting of the County Council taking place on Wednesday the 22nd of May 2024. This meeting is being broadcast live to our YouTube channel. Before we commence with today's formal business, could I ask everyone in the chamber to switch off or make silent their mobile phones and all other electronic devices, please? Before we move to the business on the agenda, I would like to remind you of the housekeeping rules for the meeting. As in all previous council meetings, any requests to speak must be made using your voting handset. Once invited to speak, please stand up and face forward and switch on the closest microphone to you. If you encounter any problems with your voting handset, please raise your handset in the air and a member of the committee services team will assist. I extend a warm welcome to members of the public attending the meeting. You are very welcome to attend and observe proceedings today, but I would ask that you don't disrupt the meeting. Before we move on to the election of a chair, can I also remind the council that speeches can only be made on nominating the Chair of the Council only. All other nominations will be moved and seconded without speeches. Moving on to item one of the agenda, election of chair. Can I have nominations for the Office of Chair of the Council, please?
Chair, Acting Chair. The nomination for the position of Chair of Durham County Council for the ensuing year 2024/25 enables a unique opportunity to provide a level of continuity of chairship skills and experience, an appreciation and understanding of governance rules, a respectful independence with a given application of fairness to all members, which has been recognised and appreciated by all sides within this chamber. Therefore, the nomination of councillor Joan Nicholson as Chair is duly proposed.
Thank you. Is that nomination seconded, please?
Good morning, Acting Chair. I'll second that proposal and in doing so, I'd just like to say that I think Joan has been a remarkable chair and I hope she has another wonderful year in that position.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for the position of Chair of the Council? With no other oper- with no other oper- operations, nominations, does Council agree the election of councillor Joan Nicholson as Chair? Councillor Nicholson, congratulations on your reappointment. Can I invite you to come to the dais, please?
I, Joan Nicholson of Anfield Plain Division, have been elected to the Office of Chair of the County Council. Declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgement and ability. Good morning, everyone, and thank you. It's a huge honour to have done this job for a year and to do it for another year. Going forward, I hope we all learn that whichever side of the table we sit at, we all have a legitimate opinion and should respectfully be able to share that with one another. Thank you for everyone who's supported me, especially my leader. And thank you to Amanda and Richard and the rest of the cabinet, who I couldn't have done the job without. And to the members. Sometimes we've had some challenging times, but you know what, at the end of it, I hope we're all still good friends. Thank you. We now move on to item three on the agenda, the election of Vice Chair. Can I have a nomination for the Office of Vice Chair of the Council?
I nominate councillor Patricia Jopling as Vice Chairman of the Council for the ensuing year.
Can I have a seconda? Are there any other nominations? There are no other nominations. Does the Council agree the election of councillor Patricia Jopling as Vice Chair of the Council? Can I invite councillor Jopling? Thank you. I, Patricia Jopling from Crook Ward, having been elected to the Office of Vice Chair of the County Council, declare that I will take the office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgement and ability. We move on to item four, the minutes of the meeting. Can I have a mover?
Chair, can I move the minutes, please?
Thank you. And a seconda?
Second the minutes, Chair.
That's to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 27th of March 2024. Are the minutes agreed? Thank you. We move on to item five, declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any item of business on the agenda? Can I move on to item six, the chairman's announcement? Can I extend a warm welcome to councillor June Clark, the recently elected member for the Horden Division? June is familiar to some of us, having served on the council from 2013 to 2021. Welcome back, June. Members, you will have already noticed that we will be taking some photographs throughout the course of this morning's meeting. The council photo will be taken in the council chamber at the conclusion of the meeting and will take five to 10 minutes to organise. As always, your patience would be much appreciated. I am pleased to announce that my charity for charities for this forthcoming year will be Tiny Lives and Friends Together Crook. Finally, I want to take the opportunity to remind all councillors of their obligation under the code of conduct and members' responsibility around registering disposable pecuniary interests or other significant interests and declaring these at meetings. Where an interest is engaged, I would encourage all members to review their declarations of interest form, which are published on the web page. The Director of Legal and Democratic Services will be arranging a training training session for members on declarations of interest. I would kindly ask you all to address each other in a correct manner during our meetings and also request that respect is shown from all sides of the chamber at all times. Robust debate is part of the democratic process, but please respect the views of others and do not point fingers during debate. It is not appropriate to shout at other councillors across the floor during the debate. We have microphones which allow everyone to be heard, so please use them when speaking. I would ask that all councillors remain in the chamber at the end of the meeting and stand whilst I and the Vice Chair and officers on the dais exit the council chamber at the conclusion of all meetings. Councillors are then free to leave the chamber, however, today if you could remain as we would have our group photograph. Thank you. We move on to item seven. The leaders' announcement of deputy leader and cabinet members.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to move that the deputy leader and cabinet remem- members remain unchanged for the following year. I'd like to thank them for all the work that they've done in the past year and all that still to come. The portfolios will also remain unchanged.
Thank you. We move on to item eight, annual review of the constitution. Can I ask the Director of Legal and Democratic Services to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. I'm pleased to present this year's annual review of the constitution to council today for approval. The approach to the review has followed the same format as in previous years and the changes are presented in the order in which they appear in the constitution. Where appropriate, tracked changed versions of the relevant sections are appended to the report and a table summarising all of the changes are attached at appendix 15. The majority of changes are minor in nature and are intended to update or clarify. For example, a number of job titles have been amended following changes within the directorate since last year. With regards to the articles of the council, article four relates to the full council and there are two changes there proposed. Firstly, to update the reference to local development frameworks to refer to the County Durham Plan which replaced the local development frameworks, and also to include the council's homelessness strategy within the council's budget and policy framework, which means it would require approval by full council. The housing strategy is already part of the budget and policy framework and given the links between the two strategies, it's appropriate for both of them to be included. With regard to part three allegations, allocation of responsibilities, the overview and scrutiny rules state that the Chair and Vice Chair of Corporate and Overview and Scrutiny Management Board shall be additional members of scrutiny committees, which is incorrect. The Chair and Vice Chair of Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board are indeed members of the scrutiny committees but not additional members, so it's proposed to correct that error. It's also proposed to update the objectives of Environment and Sustainable Communities Overview and Scrutiny Committee to reflect the new council plan. However, it's noted that the terms of reference for all overview and scrutiny committees will be reviewed over the course of the next 12 months alongside the changes that result from the Local Government Boundary Commission review and they will be presented to council at some point for approval. In relation to the audit committee, the proposed changes to the terms of reference are perhaps some of the more substantive changes proposed as part of the annual review. In February 2024, the Audit Committee held a workshop to review its effectiveness as set out in the SIPF best practice guidance. The committee's work programme is consistent with best practice, but the review identified that the terms of reference in the constitution are out of date and it's therefore proposed to amend those as set out at appendix three to the report. And those revised terms of reference include specific responsibility for the scrutiny of the council's treasury management performance, for which the committee will receive specific training on. Under the Statutory Licensing Committee, that's currently referred to as a subcommittee of the General Licensing and Registration Committee, which again is incorrect. It's proposed that we amend this to reflect that the committee comprises 15 members drawn from the 27 members of the General Licensing and Regulation Registration Committee. In terms of other bodies, on the Chief Officer Appointments Committee, historically, the leader and deputy leader of the council have always been the Chair and Vice Chair of this committee, which is appropriate given the nature of the committee's business. It's therefore proposed to formalise this convention by amending the terms of reference to reflect that the leader and deputy leader of the council will be the Chair and Vice Chair of this committee. If that's agreed, this would remove the need for these appointments to be made at the annual meeting, including at today's. In terms of joint arrangements, there are a number of amendments to the Health and Wellbeing Board proposed to reflect changes to the membership and also to clarify the board's functions. And the review identified that there was no reference in the constitution to the council's statutory community safety partnership. Therefore, we're proposing to correct that anomaly by including a section on the Safe Durham partnership and its terms of reference. In relation to officer delegations, under the Chief Executives Delegations at Table Two, it's proposed to update the Chief Executive's delegations to reflect his role as acting returning officer at UK Parliamentary General Elections for completeness and to ensure that the scheme of delegation reflects the Association of Electoral Administrators guidance. And amendments will also be made to reflect the realignment of the Director of Legal and Democratic Services to the Chief Executive from Resources. Under the Corporate Director for Regeneration Economy and Growth, it's proposed to update their delegation to reflect realignment of and shared responsibilities with the Corporate Director for Neighbourhoods and Climate Change. There's very minor amendments proposed to the Director of Public Health Scheme of Delegation to remove duplication. And turning to the Corporate Director of Children and Young People Services at Table Six, again, these are perhaps some of the more substantive changes proposed as the relevant heads of service requested amendments which set out their respective powers and responsibilities more clearly. Whilst that represents quite a substantive change, the amendments themselves do not include the delegation of any additional powers and relate to the existing functions discharged by those relevant officers. In terms of the delegations to the Corporate Director of Neighbourhoods and Climate Change, the proposed changes include updates to reflect the introduction of the Community Protection Service and their full range of functions. And there are a number of delegations which currently require consultation with the Director of Legal and Democratic Services, but in practice, consultation is only required in certain circumstances, such as where legal proceedings are to be issued. And therefore, it's proposed to clarify that the consultation takes place where appropriate. And there are also corresponding changes proposed to reflect those under the Corporate Director for Regeneration and Economy and Growth that I've just referred to, as well as some updates to legislative references. For the Corporate Director of Resources, he currently has authority to terminate employment of staff by reason of early retirement, where there is a cost to the council associated with the early release of pension benefits in consultation with the relevant portfolio holder. It's proposed to amend this provision to make it clear that he also has It's proposed to amend this provision to make it clear that he also has delegated power to terminate employment by reason of early retirement where there is no cost to the council. It's also proposed to include reference to the charging for appointees policy following its adoption last year, and there are proposals to amend delegations aligned to Heads of Service which are currently in the wrong place, and to clarify roles and responsibilities in relation to the handling of pension appeals. Turning to the rules of procedure, there are some very minor amendments to the council procedure rules and executive procedure rules just to correct numbering errors. For the financial procedure rules, there are some minor amendments to update legislative references and reflect the revised terms of reference of the Audit Committee in particular in relation to that scrutiny of the council's treasury management performance. But it's also proposed to update Appendix A to the rules so that they reflect the changes to financial management standards. There are minor amendments proposed to the contract procedure rules, again to clarify and update legislative references. And finally, the Code of Practice for Members and Officers Dealing with Planning Matters has been reviewed following the publication of the Lawyers in Local Government Code of Good Practice on Planning Matters, and a number of changes to our code have been proposed to ensure that our arrangements reflect best practice. Constitution Working Group has considered and was supportive of the proposed changes at its meetings on the 22nd of February, the 19th of March and the 10th of May. Cabinet considered the proposed changes on the 17th of April and approved the delegation of executive powers under the officer scheme of delegation, and it also resolved to recommend that the council agree the proposed amendments today. Chair, the recommendations are at paragraph four, for the council to approve the changes in the Constitution to take immediate effect, and request that the amended constitution is published on the council's website.
Thank you. Can I have a mover?
Thank you, Chair. The council's constitution sets out how the council operates, how decisions are made and the procedures which are followed to ensure that these are efficient, transparent and accountable to local people. Some of these processes are required by law, while others are a matter for the council to choose. It is good practice to review the constitution regularly and to ensure that it remains fit for purpose and reflects good practice in legislation. The report summarises the work that has been done throughout the year in reviewing all aspects of the constitution. The majority of the proposed changes are minor in nature and are intended to update provisions to reflect changes in staffing arrangements, legislation and to clarify and correct inaccuracies. The proposed changes to the officer scheme of delegation in respect of executive functions, which Cabinet approved on the 17th of April 2024, are minimal but essential to ensuring that council business can be conducted efficiently and effectively. The proposed changes in terms of reference and rules of procedure and Code of Practice for Members and Officers Dealing with Planning Matters falls to council to determine. These proposals, together with those already approved by Cabinet, will ensure that the council's governance arrangements are fit for purpose and reflect best practice. As in previous years, Constitution Working Group have been consulted on the proposed changes and were supportive of them. It is beneficial to have cross-party input to this process. And in moving the recommendations set out at paragraph four of the report, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Monitoring Officer and her team for undertaking this year's review, and to all the officers across the council who have contributed. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a second, eh?
Thanks, Chair. Just in seconding the report, also put on record my thanks to the Director of Legal and Democratic Services and her team for the tremendous amount of work that's gone into this. Good governance of the council is absolutely essential, not just from a legal perspective but to make sure that we're accountable for the public who we make the decisions on behalf of. So I'd like to formally second the recommendations set out in the report.
Thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak on the report? Does the council agree the proposed changes to the constitution and its publication online? Thank you. We move on to item nine, appointment of council bodies and allocation of seats to political groups under Section 15 of the Local Government and Housing Act 1989. Can I ask the Director of Legal and Democratic Services to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. So the purpose of the report is to appoint committees and the Corporate Parenting Panel in accordance with the constitution and to determine the allocation of seats amongst the eight political groups on council. Paragraph five of the report sets out the legislative requirements regarding political balance and the principles to be followed when allocating seats. And paragraph six of the report sets out the number of seats each group has on the council and their percentage entitlements to seats across the committees. Appendix two sets out the proportionate distribution of seats by group, and appendix three sets out the allocation of seats across the eight groups. Chair, the recommendations are set out at paragraph four A to F of the report.
Thank you. Can I have a mover?
May I move the report, Chair?
Thank you. And a seconder?
Second the report, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak on the report? Does the council agree the recommendations detailed in the report? Thank you. We move on to item 10, appointment of Chairs and Vice Chairs, Committees and Subcommittees I will invite nominations for Chairs and Vice Chairs.
Terry Duffy, Pete Lee, East Division. I move then nominations for Chairs and Vice Chairs, as table.
I need a seconder?
I'll second that, Chair. Thank you.
So, Chair, in advance of the meeting, we've received a table of proposed Chairs and Vice Chairs which have been nominated and seconded. They will be displayed on screen, but they will also have been circulated just now to all members via email, so hopefully you will have received those. Apologies, they won't be on screen.
Are there any other nominations? Does the Sexton? councillor Sexton?
Yeah, Chair, I have to say, just getting this now and then seconds later being asked, are there any other nominations? I haven't even read it. Doesn't seem fair. So before I say anything, I want to know that I've got me facts correct by reading it.
Councillor, I'm happy to give all councillors more time to read that paperwork.
Unless, Chair, unless somebody says it's as is, minus something.
Thank you, councillors. councillor Sexton has red-chested to speak. councillor Sexton?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Paul Seaton, Chester Street South. The proposal was tabled as is, so the assumption is, I haven't got anything to go off comparison, so this is all new to me as of very recently. However, scanning through, we notice councillor Moyst isn't on there, so obviously, we would like to put an amendment forward that councillor Moyst has put forward as Chair of Economy and Enterprise scrutiny. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. That will need a seconder?
I second him.
Are there any other nominations?
The Joint Administration nominate councillor Sam Zaire. This is Chair.
So just to clarify, that position has already been moved as part of the block, so the only nominate, the amendment to that we have at the minute is for councillor Moyst. Are there any other nominations before we move to deal with the amendment and then So we will deal with the nomination of councillor Moyst as Chair of Economy and Enterprise scrutiny committee as an amendment, so as per the rules of debate, we'll deal with that first. Give the team a second to load that into the system. It's one to vote in favour of councillor Moyst as being Chair, two against, or three to abstain, and the buzzer will sound to indicate that voting's open.
Chair, I'm assuming this is a named vote. If not, can I ask for one, please?
Can you put your microphone on?
It will require the support of 10 members for a named vote. Yeah, so we've got 10, so the way in which members vote will appear in the minutes. If members have problems with their handsets, if you could keep your hands raised, because whilst we can see you, that doesn't necessarily mean the team around the room have seen them.
Councillors, I do apologise. That technology is failing us this morning. There is, the greatest and simplest form is kind of... There is, the greatest and simplest form is kind of... But we'll bear with technology. We're closing the vote? Councillors? Fifty-six for, sixty-one against, no abstentions, the amendment falls. We now move to the vote on the nomination of Chairs and Vice-Chairs as tabled.
So, to be clear, you will be voting one in favour of the proposals as tabled and circulated on your email, two against, or three to abstain. And if you press the wrong button, pressing the right button corrects your vote. Please wait till the vote's open.
Councillors, we're closing the vote. Councillors, appointment to Chairs and Vice-Chairs of the Committees, four, one hundred and sixteen, one against. The motion's carried and the appointment that's set out in the table below you is confirmed. We move on to item 11. The appointment to joint bodies and other bodies, 2024, 2025. Can I ask the Director of Legal and Democratic Services to present the report?
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of this report is for Council to agree appointments to joint bodies and other bodies to which the Council are invited to nominate representatives. Details and criteria for nominating to the bodies are set out in paragraph four to the report. But in summary, for the County Durham and Darlington Fire and Rescue Authority and Police and Crime Panel, Council is asked to agree the allocation of seats which have been calculated in accordance with political balance. Appendix, and you can see that at appendix two and four of the report. With regard to the Charter Trust, details are set out at appendix three to the report. Appointees are drawn from members representing electoral areas wholly or partially within the former Durham city boundary. In addition, the County Council, as principal authority, may appoint three additional trustees representing the wider area. However, since May 2021, the Council has chosen not to appoint those positions. With regard to the Joint Audit Committee, since 2013, the Council has nominated a representative to serve on the Joint Audit Committee to assist the Police and Crime Commissioner and the Chief Constable. The Chair of the Council's Audit Committee has always been nominated to this position. In terms of the North East Combined Authority, Council will recall that at its meeting on the 27th of March, it appointed the leader of the Council to the new North East Combined Authority with the deputy leader and the portfolio holder for Economy and Partnerships as substitute members. However, appointments are still to be made to two committees, the Overview and Scrutiny Committee and Audit and Standards Committee. Delegated authority is sought for me, as the Director of Legal and Democratic Services, to make these appointments in consultation with the relevant group leaders to take account of the political balance allocation as advised by the NECA Secretariat. The Business Durham Advisory Board, Council agreed the membership for this in 2122, at its meeting in July 2021. And since then, the membership has remained as set out at paragraph 4b of the report. And it's proposed that the membership remains unchanged for 2425. The report also seeks delegated authority to agree nominations to other bodies as referred to at paragraph 4g to the report and also for any in-year changes. Chair, the recommendations are set out at paragraph 3a to h in the report.
Thank you. Can I ask the Leader of the Council to move paragraph 3a to d and f to h detailed in the report?
Thank you, Chair. I move the recommendations as set out at paragraphs 3a to d and f to h of the report. In respect of recommendation 3c, the Director of Legal and Democratic Services has outlined that the Council may appoint three additional trustees to the Charter Trust as set out at paragraph four to appendix three of the report. The report notes that we did not appoint to these additional positions in the last three years and in moving this recommendation, I don't propose that the Council appoints to these positions this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a seconder for the recommendations moved by the Leader of the Council?
Second the recommendations, Chair.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions on the report? Can I ask the Council to agree the recommendations? Can I ask the Leader to move paragraph 3e detailed in the report?
Thank you, Chair. I move recommendation 3e and nominate councillor Alex Watson as Chair of the County Council's Audit Committee to serve on the Joint Audit Committee.
Can I have a seconder for the recommendation?
Second the recommendations, Chair.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Can I ask the Council to agree the recommendations? Thank you. We move on to item 12, appointment of independent members to the Audit Committee. Can I ask the Corporate Director of Resources to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. It's recommended good practice to have at least two independent members appointed to the Audit Committee and the tenure of the existing members was extended at the council meeting on the 18th of October last year whilst the positions were advertised and an appointment process undertaken. The report sets out the details of that process with the existing independent members who were initially appointed in 2018, free to reply. Following the conclusion of the recruitment process, the recommendations are that the Council approve the appointment of three independent members to the Audit Committee and increase of one, as this will provide increased resilience and ensure that as far as possible, at least two independent members will be in attendance at meetings of the Audit Committee. The recommended appointments are that Ian Rudd and Clive Robinson are reappointed alongside Frances Barnish as the third independent member. These proposals were endorsed and agreed by the Audit Committee at its meeting on Monday this week and the recommendations are set out at paragraph five for Council, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a mover?
Thank you, Chair. Certainly, myself and councillor Fenwick were fully involved in the recruitment process that is set out in this report. As Chair of the Audit Committee, I really welcome the input from our independent members, both Clive Robinson and Ian Rudd have served the Audit Committee with great distinction and contributed well to the robust challenge and discussions at the Audit Committee, helping us ensure the Council's internal controls, risk and financial governance arrangements are as they should be. I'd like to place on record my thanks to both for their services to the Audit Committee over many years. We had five candidates expressing an interest in these positions and following the interviews, it was clear that there were three outstanding candidates. Given that, understandably, diaries do not always permit the two independent members to attend all meetings. In consultation with the Corporate Director and the Chief Internal Auditor, I fully support increasing the appointments to three independent members. In addition to the reappointment of Clive and Ian, I believe Frances Barnish will also be a great addition to the Audit Committee. And subject to Council endorsing these appointments, I look to working with all three. With that, Chair, I move the recommendations.
Thank you, councillor. And can I have a seconder to the report?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to also place on record my thanks to Clive and Ian for their contributions to the Audit Committee and speak in support of the recommendations. Increasing the independent members' numbers to three will provide a greater likelihood that we will have at least two independent members in attendance at all Audit Committee meetings, ensuring we continue to comply with the best practice and I'm sure Frances will bring a lot to the committee too. In seconding the recommendations, can I place on record my thanks to Tracy Henderson, our Chief Internal Auditor and Corporate Forward Manager, who supported myself and councillor Watson with the appointment process. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions or does anyone wish to speak on the report? Does the Council agree the appointments? Thank you. We move on to item 13, the statement from the Returning Officer. This report is for information... Move on to item 14, the dates of the council meetings. Can I ask the Council to agree the suggested dates of council meetings for 2024/25 as printed on the agenda? Thank you. That concludes today's business. Thank you to everyone for attending. Will members please stay behind for the group photograph?